Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Louis Imhoff and I am clerk to the board. I would like to welcome and thank you on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Passaic for virtually attending this evening's 184th reorganization meeting being held today, January 7th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement to open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and published in both the Herald News and the Bergen Record on January 2nd, 2021, in accordance with the provisions of the law. I am pleased to introduce this evening's master ceremonies, Anthony J. De Nova, Administrator for the County of Passaic.
Thank you, Louis. I would ask that we rise for the flag salute and if I could ask Commissioner Duffy to please lead us in that flag salute.
It would be my honor. Thank you, Tony. Everyone ready? You're up. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God.
Divisible.
Expertise and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call upon the Reverend Dr. Randall Lassiter, pastor of Calvary Baptist Church here in the city of Patterson, to lead us in your invocation.
Sir, I do not see Reverend Lassiter online at this time.
He is right there now.
He is online.
Reverend Lassiter, you are on mute. There we go.
Mute, sir. Right.
Rev.
Good evening.
Good evening. Reverend, you're up for the invocation.
Okay. Are we ready now? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry.
I just got in. I'm exhausted from pushing buttons and trying to get.
Yeah, ditto.
Well, let's, this is a needed prayer. Let's pray. Gracious Father, we thank you, and we truly do thank you for this hour. We thank you for this great democracy. We thank you for this great place of America. We thank you, Lord God, for this time of reorganization in our county. We thank you, Lord God, for those elected, oh God, and reelected. Father, you have graced them, oh God, with your ability to be our modern day judge, oh God, to hold truth, oh God, to the evidence and procedures that you have placed and given to all mankind. We thank you that you've empowered them, oh God, to govern in a way, oh God, that is wise and with wisdom and with grace and authority, your love wrapping around it all. Thank you for this county, Passaic County, as you continue to use it and lead as a leading county in this state. Thank you for the residents, oh God, who trust and believe in those elected officials. Thank you, Lord God, that we hold them up, we pray for them and their families. So we thank you that you be with us in this ceremony this evening. Thank you, Lord God, for those who have been elected, have been reelected, those who have been put in place by you. Cover them as they take on this leading of people in this particular time and dispensation that we live in. We give you all the praise, honor, and glory in the wonderful name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you, Reverend Lassiter.
God bless you. Thank you.
God bless you as well.
Thank you, Reverend.
So I always have the honor to, is, did we correct Judge Capicella's issue? Is he on? Micah?
I do not, excuse me, I do not see him on at this time. I know I heard from his IT guy who was working with him.
Okay. All right. So when he gets on, we can, we can always go, go back to Judge Capicella for his remarks. So we'll move along and I, we are honored to have Danielle Ireland Imhoff, our county clerk, here with us this evening. Hi Danielle, Happy New Year. And she's going to read the certification of the election results.
Good evening, Stephanie. Happy New Year to you and Happy New Year to our Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Cansisters of Passaic County has determined the following individuals as being elected on the election held on November 3rd, 2020, in the county of Passaic. For the election of freeholder, which under Chapter 67 law is now titled County Commissioner, as of January 1st, 2021. Bruce James received 113,762 votes with a plurality of 31,385. And Theodore P.J. Best receives 96,641 votes with a plurality of 24,291. In carrying out my statutory duty, I have certified and transmitted the election results, memorializing Bruce James and Theodore P.J. Best as being duly elected to their respective seats to the presidency Secretary of State and Passaic County's own, the Honorable Tahisha Way. Thank you to the voters of Passaic County for exercising your civic duty by voting on the November 3rd, 2020 election.
And if I could just, a point of privilege, you know, this, this year was certainly a challenge for all of the offices here in Passaic County who deal directly with elections. But Danielle's office, our county clerk, our, our Board of Elections and our Superintendent of Elections did an outstanding job under challenging times. But again, I really think that Passaic County was the leader in the elections as well as leading in this COVID response. So Danielle, thank you to you and your staff and all of the other departments that were involved in making the election run as smoothly as it could.
Bernie Capicella, Judge Capicella is on again.
I'm not sure that he hears us yet.
Well, he's muted, but he, I'm not sure either.
Micah, could you unmute Judge Capicella?
I hear you. I can hear you.
There you are.
Right. The miracles of technology. So we'll go back into the agenda and I always have the honor and privilege to introducing the Honorable Judge Capicella. I can honestly say that I think Passaic County and the Vistage probably has the best relationship of any county and Vistage in the state of New Jersey. And in no short reason because of Judge Capicella, his leadership, his partnership, his love for Passaic County, and he's been a great partner. And I am honored to introduce to him, to you, Judge Capicella, to say a few words about the state of the courts. So Judge Capicella, thank you. Happy New Year to you and your family. Nice to see you. Uh-oh, we've lost you again. You're muted. There you go.
I'm muted. Okay. You know, I tell everybody in the judiciary, keep going at it, you know? Technology's funny. It doesn't work and then you want to walk away and throw the computer against the wall. But you have to be persistent and I guess that's what we just experienced. Well, thank you, Director. You know, I had a judicial council meeting this morning and that includes all the assignment judges, the Chief Justice, Judge Grant, who's our acting AOC director. And I hear frequently the complaints of the other AJs about facilities, about this, about that, problems with the county. And I just sit there very quietly. And, you know, they'll say to me, well, Judge Capicella, how, but you know, I basically say, we don't have those problems. We have an absolutely excellent relationship with our county. And I know Robert Tracy Miticay, who I can't say enough about, he's been in a couple of different Vistages. I know he was in Bergen, he was in Morris. He said he's never seen anything like this. So that's really good. That's a, that's a credit to all of us. First, I want to thank you for what you've done for us through the COVID era here. And it hasn't been easy. I know it's put a tremendous strain on the county in terms of, you know, sanitizing and adjusting different things within the courthouse, putting up signage, getting people into the courthouse and thermal scanning them. And I think, you know, the county deserves a lot of credit, you know? I don't usually single people up, but Steve Orsini and his crew, they, they are really on top of it. I mean, they, if you go into a chambers, as soon as you leave, they come in, they sanitize it, and it gives us a real sense of confidence when you do that. Want to thank you for the beautiful annex, you know, that we can't get in. We're dying to get in there. I'm sure all of you have been in there. It is an absolutely beautiful building and I keep bragging to the Chief Justice and to Judge Grant how beautiful it is, and they want to come see it. They do. So, well, you know, maybe when the weather, when COVID's over and the weather's right and we'll, we'll have a ceremony and have them up there. It's been a challenging year for all of us, I know, in the county and certainly in the judiciary. One good thing with the judiciary is that we put in a pretty strong IT infrastructure. We've been doing that over the years, you know? Judge Grant and I do the security, the IT stuff together. And we spent a lot of money on, on infrastructure, but it's paid off in spades right now because we really hit the ground running. As soon as we closed that courthouse on March 16th, we were able to very quickly adapt into a virtual world and we're very lucky. I've got a fabulous IT department, Carlos, who just helped me get on to this meeting, and Judge Mohammed, who was a systems engineer when he was an undergraduate and then he went and became a systems engineer and then he went to law school. And he's just, he's a whiz with this stuff. And we have a reputation in Passaic County of being really the technology leader, no matter what it was. It was criminal justice reform, virtual grand jury, virtual hearings, now virtual trials that we're going to try to do. So, you know, when I was on in the judiciary in the 1999 and probably for 10 years or so after, you never heard anything about Passaic in Trenton. And now I'm telling you, we are at the forefront, you know? The, the reputation we have with the judiciary is really, really outstanding. Just a couple of things about the virtual stuff that we've been doing. So from April 20th to December 20th, remember, we closed the courthouse in March, we've had 26,143 Superior Court Judge virtual proceedings. Now, we also have non-judge proceedings, so those would be like our, our teams meetings. Superior Court non-judge virtual proceedings, 2,477. And of course, we can't forget about the municipal courts, right? I mean, the municipal courts have conducted virtually 19,335. So, you know, this is, these are good numbers for, for any Vistage. The filings, here's where the news isn't always so great. Filings have decreased by 42% and that's compared to November 2019. So that's something that you would normally say, well, okay, that's a good thing. One of the things there is, quite honestly, it's something that I know, soon to be Commissioner Bartlett, because we talked about it, is we're very concerned about landlord tenant. You know, we, we've got probably about somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000 pending landlord tenant cases. Now, you all know there's an eviction moratorium. But our, our estimate is that that's without, that when the eviction moratorium is lifted, that, that number's really going to even skyrocket more. So we're preparing, we're taking some steps to address that issue. The filings decreased, but the resolutions, meaning on our end, what we resolved, they decreased by 54% because we're working in this virtual world now. It's just not as efficient as the real world. And so we're 54% down in resolutions. The overall backlog increased, that means landlord tenant, special civil, criminal, civil, chancery, backlog increased 352% compared to November 2019. And what we always do is we, we divide the total by 100 so that all the Vistages in the, in the state are even. And when we do that, our, our monthly filing increases go to 575% compared to 2019. Good things, we sworn in Judge, our new Judge, Aaron Del Sardo, was sworn in and I have very high regard for him. He is really coming into the judiciary, he's extraordinarily experienced. The shortages we have are still there. You know, when Judge Clark retired, she retired back in November, she turned 70, that's mandatory retirement for the Superior Court Judges. She was in our count. She was originally from Bergen County, but when she came here, she was included in our count. And so that made us five short. We were, we had five vacancies and now with Darren, and so we're still sitting here with four vacancies, which, you know, we're dealing with, but it's certainly affecting when I read those numbers on backlog and, and increase in the failure to, to resolve cases. That's, that's not good. So that's what I have, oh, the sheriff, I want to just thank the sheriff. I mean, you can't say enough about the sheriff's officers that are in this courthouse. I mean it. They, they know every nook and cranny and they handle things, you know? Getting people into the courthouse now, having to take their temperature, you know, they have to be, have their temperature taken and sometimes they have to be questioned and it's not easy. And so I give them a lot of credit. So thank you Sheriff Bernick and all the officers. That's it, Director, for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Capicella. I appreciate you taking the time and be with us here this evening. And again, thank you for your cooperation always. So again, I'm going to go a little bit out of order because we are honored to have the First Lady of the state of New Jersey with us here this evening, Tammy Murphy. And we got a little bit of a late start and I know she has a hectic schedule. So I'm going to ask her to make some remarks now. Madam First Lady, thank you so much for being here. Happy New Year to you and the governor.
Micah has to unmute her. Or she, oh, she did.
Good evening, Passaic County. I thank you so much for the honor of inviting me to be part of your swearing in program. I apologize, planes, our schedule is like planes landing at Newark, so please excuse me for jumping the queue here. But I'm, you know, in view of yesterday's attack on democracy, your swearing in has taken on a newly solemn tone. The campaigns are over, the election was free and fair, and every vote was counted. Yet there is unrest in our nation. This unrest, which has been building for some time, has reached a boiling point. And while the mantle of leadership has always been heavy, it now falls upon every elected leader to bridge this dangerous and painful divide. It's going to take time, patience, integrity, compassion, and forgiveness. It will take concerted effort by all of us to reject the political tribalism we have become so comfortable with. We must build trust in one another and in our institutions. We must talk to each other with respect and even more importantly, we have to listen. This behavior must be modeled by every one of our elected leaders at every level of government. It's a lot to ask during this fraught moment in the United States history. But I know that Passaic County will continue to be in great hands with Director Pat Laporte, Deputy Director Bruce James, and Commissioner T.J. Best, as well as the entire Board of Commissioners and County Administrator Anthony De Nova. This is an opportunity to set our sights on the future and leave behind the mistakes of the past. Now, across New Jersey, our foremost goal is to pull together, to move our communities out of harms way from this pandemic and onto a stronger, fairer, and healthier future. We're all in this as one, as New Jerseians and as Americans. And our administration is committed to being your partner in your continued success. May God bless you all, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America. Thank you so much for letting me join.
Thank you, Madam First Lady. And I have to say that from the beginning of this pandemic, the Murphy Administration has opened the line of communication second to none, having calls in the beginning every day, important to get the information out. And your husband and the administration have done a fantastic job and they've allowed counties like Passaic County to really be a leader in testing and now vaccinating people. So we pray for your safety and the governor's safety and your family's safety. I know these are difficult times, but thank you so much for being here this evening and joining us.
Thank you for having me and congratulations to everyone.
Okay, so we will now go back to our county clerk, Danielle Imhoff, to administer the oath of office to newly elected County Commissioner Bruce James.
Thank you, Tony. If I may, I'd like to share a couple of brief words about Commissioner James before I administer his oath of office. Commissioner James is such a tireless advocate for so many, at so many levels. And he's always focused on ensuring that supportive services are provided to the seniors, the veterans, the special needs population in our community. And his tenure and his experience have been invaluable to so many. So Commissioner James, congratulations to you. And congratulations to all of us who live in Passaic County and are served by your compassion and the experience that you add to the Board of County Commissioners. So would you briefly go ahead and say your name after me? I state your name.
I, Bruce James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties as County Commissioner.
All of the duties as Passaic County Commissioner.
For the county of Passaic.
Oops, sorry. For the county of Passaic.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. I should have read it before, right? Thank you very much for doing this, really. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Commissioner, if you want to make some remarks, now would be the time.
Yeah, and we're going to try to keep them brief since we have quite a bit on the agenda tonight. I want to thank, first of all, all of my fellow freestylers and you, Tony, and your staff. It is a joy to come to work and this county is so well-served by all of you that it's a pleasure to be reelected because I get a chance to do that for three more years. I want to thank our chairman, John Curry, who keeps giving me the opportunity to run. You know, we'll talk about that at some point, but I really do appreciate it, Chairman. You've put together a great team and a great county. This past year, I've been involved since early part of the year with a number of policemen as well as some of the people who were involved in the Black Lives Matter movement. And I started a task force because it was my belief that people do better when they speak to each other and they communicate. And everybody that I invited with the understanding that everything was on the table, that everything can be discussed and, you know, we're going to make some progress in making things better. And we have accomplished a lot of that. I have to thank our Assemblyperson, Shavanda Sumter, for her work in this effort also. You know, some key legislation was passed, some key changes in, in training has been developed, and we have a whole new view on community policing, which I'm going to continue to work on this. I'm going to ask the freestylers to back some key programs that will help the police to better do community policing. But I think we're on the right path. We, we all get along in this county. I think that the First Lady was key on what she said. And if anywhere we have an opportunity to bring America together, it's what we do in this county. So thank you. Thank you to the public for another three years. I really appreciate it. And let's get to work because we have a lot to do. And Anthony, one more thing. I, I think that what you did in Charlene Gungle and Steve Orsini and your, your staff, it is absolutely amazing. You saved a lot of lives and I keep saying it, you know, I've been on this since December, really, when it was in China. I was sounding the alarm and people thought I was crazy. But you really picked it up and made sure that people got the best shot that they could possibly have of keeping out of harms way. And God will forever reward you for that because it really was on you. And I thank you so much for what you've done.
Well, I, Bruce, I agree with those words. I said it before, it's a team effort. I didn't do it alone and there's great people around me and I couldn't thank them all enough. But honestly, thank you all for your leadership because without your leadership, I couldn't do what I do every day. So thank you for those words. All right. I see that we have Mayor Hector Laura from the city of Passaic. I don't know if he's going to be on video or not, Mayor.
Hi, Tony. I'm trying to get the video connected. I'm not sure why it's not coming up. I'm going to try one more time. If not, then hopefully I can do it with audio.
Your name looks very good and light though, Hector.
Thank you, thank you. You're, you're very kind. For some reason, I do not have an option to turn on the camera. I tried to do it on the phone as well. There's no option. It reads, wait one second, maybe. I had to change the.
Yes, there you are.
I had to say, I was going to do it on my phone, but I went to the podium in the office.
So Mayor Laura is going to administer the oath to newly elected County Commissioner Theodore J. Best. Not Theodore O. Best, O. Best, T.J.
Theodore O'Neil Best, Jr.
There you go. AKA T.J.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just want to say a couple of brief words about Commissioner Theodore O. Best, Jr. One of the things that has most impacted me as an elected official, and I could speak on behalf of our community, is Commissioner Best's willingness to connect, relate, and be with the community. His humble approach, he's been in our city with his children and his beautiful wife to enjoy the new part that the county provided for all of us. They went kayaking and played in the playground, come to our concerts. I've seen him at local events when I got to serve with him in the county along with all of the commissioners. I feel a little jealousy here because I used to be able to tell him, we shared an office and title, and now he can say, no, you were never a commissioner. So he's officially able to hold up on that. But truly, I can tell you that his passion, his commitment for service, his oftentimes being a zeal for serving others and advocating and championing for the cause of those who are most vulnerable and those in the greatest need of assistance has inspired so many of us throughout the county. And it is an honor to be able to swear you in on this day, Commissioner. If I may, if you would repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Theodore O'Neil Best, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
As County Commissioner.
Of County Commissioner.
For the county of Passaic.
For the county of Passaic.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Virtual handshake here.
We see the lovely Mrs. Best there in the background. Hi. Happy New Year. County Commissioner, this would be the time if you'd like to make some remarks. County Commissioner, this would be the time if you'd like to make some remarks.
Yes, I'll be extremely brief. Again, I just wanted to thank Mayor Laura for doing me this honor, swearing me in. You know, he's always been a friend, a colleague, and a great example of what leadership and service leadership is. And the city of Passaic and the county of Passaic is lucky to have him serve in the capacity that he's doing. So thank you so much, Mayor, for doing this honor for me and my family. Again, I wanted to reiterate everything that Bruce said, thanking our chairman, John Curry, for the opportunity, our whole Passaic County Democratic Party, all of our elected officials, all of my wonderful colleagues that I've served with over the course of the last nine years, our great administrative team, yourself, Tony, our deputy, as well as our council, and our clerk to the board, who all do an amazing job serving the public. Also wanted to thank my family for being there, my wife, my children, and our support team. You know, my kid's godmother, grandpa, everybody who comes through and helps out with the kids when we need them to, including grandma. And as my colleagues know, 2020 has been a trying year for many of us. I've lost several close friends, family members due to COVID. Our community has been devastated. And despite all of that, it does give me some good feeling to know, to say with confidence that the county of Passaic, despite every bad thing that's happened in 2020, is going to have a banner year in 2021 and come out stronger than we were before we went into the pandemic because of the great leadership of our outstanding team from our county administrator all the way down to our maintenance crew and our sheriff officers and everybody who's out there working so hard each and every day. So again, thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve, and let's have a great year for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, County Commissioner Best. I will turn the agenda back over to our clerk, to the board, Mr. Lew Imhoff.
Thank you, Administrator. Just give me one second, we were having a couple of questions here. Okay. May I have nominations for director for the year 2021?
I would like to nominate Commissioner, County Commissioner.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second.
I would like to nominate Commissioner.
I am unmoved.
Okay, all right.
I'd start it too, but T is ahead of me.
He's gone again.
That was not me, thank God. T.
Freelander Duffy, please proceed.
Yes, it's my pleasure, distinct honor and pleasure to nominate my good little friend, County Commissioner Pat Lepore, whom I have the utmost respect for and look to great guidance and leadership in the coming year. As my nomination.
I am honored to second that motion.
Are there any other nominations? I will move to close the nominations. Commissioner Lozara?
Yes.
No. Okay.
Second that now, second that motion.
Okay, roll call. County Commissioners, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
I'm trying to save you from that, Pat. Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lozara.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to vote upon the nomination for County Commissioner Director, please. Yes, make that motion.
Second.
Roll call. Freeladers, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Commissioner Best, yes.
Yes. Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lozara.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Congratulations, County Commissioner Director, Pat Lepore.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Tony.
May I have the nominations for Deputy Director for the year 2021?
I have learned a great deal from each of the elder statesmen I serve on this board with, but none more so than Bruce James, who really is an example to all of us of leading with conviction and compassion, and I'm proud to nominate him to be the Deputy Director of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners for 2021.
And I second that nomination of one of our elder statesmen.
I know where you live. Are there any other nominations? Can I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Freeladers, actor.
Commissioner, yes.
Hi, I keep doing that, I'm looking right at it. Freeholder, Commissioner Bartlet.
We're gonna be doing that for years, yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
She said yes, I can hear her.
Can you hear me?
No, I can hear you. We can hear you.
Motion to vote upon the nomination for County Commissioner Deputy Director.
So moved.
Second.
County Commissioners, actor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lozara.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to call upon our.
Deputy Director.
I'd like to call upon our county council, Matthew Jordan, to administer the oath to the Deputy Director, Bruce James.
That would be my honor. County Commissioner, if you could repeat after me.
I will.
I, Bruce James.
I, Bruce James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
To the government's established.
And to the government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
As County Commissioner Deputy Director.
As County Commissioner Deputy Director.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
All right. Now I'll call upon the Honorable Danielle Ireland Imhoff to administer the oath of allegiance to the Director of the Passaic County Board of Commissioners, Pat Lepore.
Thank you again, Administrator. And I just have a very big remark about Deputy Director. Always a bit in the spirit of office Director Lepore. He has such a long and fantastic track record. We know that he has served on the county level for many years. He's been six terms, and he's also served on the municipal level in Woodland Park. And he has even passed that legacy of public service on to his son. And I know that he will serve us well throughout this year with his leadership, his fiscal knowledge and expertise, and his compassion. So, Director Lepore, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Pat Lepore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
And to the government's established.
And to the government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
As Director of the Board of County Commissioners.
As Director of the Board of County Commissioners.
For the county of Passaic.
For the county of Passaic.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
To the best of my abilities and understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You know, a real trendsetter, Commissioner Lepore, the last mayor of West Patterson, the first mayor of Woodland Park, and now the first Director of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners.
How about that? You hear that, Duffy? Um, I want to take this opportunity, oh, wait, 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 I'm going out of turn.
No, no, no. I think remarks by, oh, no, you're right, we're gonna have the traditional passing of the gavel. It is my honor to introduce my dear friend, our Passaic County Democratic Chairman, our state Democratic Chairman, Mr. John Curry, to make a presentation of the gavel to our new Director, Pat Lepore. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Tony, and thank you for the job that you do for us late in this county as Administrator. I want to start by, first of all, thanking the First Lady for taking the time and standing in for the Governor of joining us this evening. They both have an extremely hectic schedule. It's an honor to have them here in Passaic County. I have to thank the both with my hat is our State Chairman, a helping assistant that they both give me, and keeping our state as successful as it is. The Honorable Judge Capasella, who I've known for so many years, I mean, you're an outstanding leader. We still hope that you're 55, which I know you're older because we'd love to keep you around as long as we can. But one day, that day is gonna come, and we understand that. But you have led us so well here as our Presiding Judge and been so supportive of the administration here in Passaic County. You know, as we go forth, and I just want to simply say, our Congressman wanted to join us this evening. I believe he's traveling back to Jersey. Of course, he's had a trying week, particularly yesterday. He had such a long day with the episodes that went on at our Capitol in Washington, D.C., that we all have to pray and work together because we have work to do in this country because I can't believe what happened in the United States of America yesterday. You know, I have to go, you know, you all could not be there without a lot of help from our team, my team in particular, and I have to start with, first of all, my municipal leaders in our 16 towns and the work that they do and their team in helping us get out the vote. I mean, they're vital to the operation. As we say, all politics are local, it sure starts locally. And, you know, we had over 218,000 people that voted in New Jersey, and it was a different year being an all-vote-by-mill. And again, I have to go back, something that I'm a part of, our election operation with our county clerk, our superintendent of elections and the Board of Elections. It was truly trying on that behalf, and the job that they all did was just phenomenal. You know, I have to thank our sheriff and his team for the help that he's given ourselves, not only keeping this county safe, but the help that he and his team have done during the campaign, the help of you, particularly TJ and Bruce and the rest of the folks that got elected this year. And to go down to my campaign's team, Ryan Yaco, Marquesia, and Sylvia, and the team that runs the office, they did an outstanding job under trying circumstances, something that we've never had a entire vote-by-mill election. It was different. And as well as our mayors, Mayor Laura, I mean, you've always been there as well to help us for what we needed in the city of Passaic and throughout the county. You know, this year, we now are in 2021, and we have to look forward, and I'm excited and looking forward, starting with the reelection of a great Governor this year, to continue his work and helping New Jersey become stronger and fairer to every citizen in this state and all of our down-ballot candidates, including our state legislature, again, our county commissioners, as well as our local mayors and council people, you know. But now I come to the point, and I hope I haven't forgotten everybody, because there was many volunteers that helped us elect our commissioners and our entire team, and I'm just proud, and I want to thank all of you. Some of you put many hours in, making signs, putting up signs, but more importantly, making phone calls because we could knock on doors in these trying times this year to make people and help people send in their ballots. I have to say, we did have a successful vote-by-mill year, and we have to thank the Governor. And again, thanking the Governor for the foresight of allowing, and this is statewide, to start the count as early as it was because it was a trying activity to get the results, and some candidates had to sit on edge for as many as 10 days after the election before they knew if they won. But folks, now I have the honor of presenting the Governor to the next Director. And with that, with this election, and I want to congratulate Commissioner Lepore for being elected by you, or to lead you this year as Director. But Pat, as you know, the gavel, our gavel is a powerful thing. And I want you to use this gavel wisely, which I know you will, and use it in the heart of taking care of the people of Passaic County. And of course, obviously, you use it to keep your commissioners in line when they're not in line. I wish you well this year, and I would love to just hand this gavel off to you and the best. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
That was magic.
Yeah, that was great.
It was magic, that was great.
Chairman, if I could, Director Lepore, before you begin, I did want to say that Congresswoman Cheryl reached out, and she obviously couldn't be here as well, but Jill Hirsch, her district director, is on watching and wanted to send her regards for a Happy New Year and congratulations to everyone. And I can't say enough about the Congresswoman and her staff, particularly Jill, on all of the work and all of the assistance and support that that office has given Passaic County. So I wanted to just let you know that the Congresswoman wanted to be here, but as Congressman Best grow, with everything going on, we certainly understand that.
All right. Thank you. To my fellow county commissioners, First Lady Tammy Murphy, Chairmen Jim Curry, members of the clergy, distinguished guests, thank you for joining us. members of the clergy, distinguished guests, thank you for joining us this evening at the first reorganization of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. I'd like to start out by thanking our Director from 2020, Sandy Lazara, who did an outstanding job through the most difficult circumstances. Um, I, I can't say enough about her. Um, she teaches every day, even though she's not in the classroom. And, uh, with this class of boys that she has, she needs all of her teaching experience to keep us in line. So I want to thank you very much, Sandy. Um, it is my distinct honor to serve as the first Director of this Board, and I want to thank the Chairman for her support and my colleagues for this privilege. Twenty-twenty was a year unlike any other, a year we are more than happy to put behind us. And while 2021 started out hopeful with the rollout of the vaccines, the events of last night showed that dark times, if we're not careful, can come to light once again. The Superstated nineteen forty-one was called a date that will live in infamy. Many of us remember the images and the horrors of the attack on Pearl Harbor. On nine-eleven, we all remember what happened that day. Those images are seared into our memory. I didn't think anything would be worse than that. But once again, last night proved us wrong. Last night proved that we have to be vigilant. Last night proved that we have to fight for democracy. Last night proved we have to respect one another and talk to one another. I'm not gonna go into casting blame, but I do hope that the people responsible for last night are brought to justice at some point. COVID-19 has touched all of our lives. I'd like to take a moment to reflect on the one-thousand-three-hundred-plus residents of Passaic County and to the seventeen, that we lost, and to the seventeen-thousand residents we lost throughout the state. These individuals, parents, grandparents, sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, husbands, wives, will never be forgotten. But out of this tragedy, the county government rose to the occasion by becoming leaders in the state and the country for our COVID response. We became a county that other counties in New Jersey and other states look to, to model their responses after. We marshaled our resources and our personnel. We set up the first COVID-19 test site at William Patterson University, run by an all-volunteer workforce of doctors, nurses, ordinary citizens, volunteering their time to help others. To each of those volunteers, words cannot express how grateful we are to each of you for putting others before self. It is a quality that we need more of in these challenging times. We were the first government in the nation to provide at-home testing services for its residents and soon became the best practice through this, throughout the state for others to follow. We provided direct relief to small businesses through a strategic partnership with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the New Jersey Redevelopment Authority. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy in Passaic County and the state, and doing our part to help them was never a question for my colleagues and me. As a former mayor, I know the importance of communications. We were, we set up calls with the mayors of all sixteen municipalities to coordinate our response and maintain a continuity of services for our shared constituents. On those calls, there were no Democrats, no Republicans. There wasn't an up-and-down county count. There was just dedicated public servants working together to stop the spread of COVID-19. I want to acknowledge each and every one of them for their leadership and cooperation. Without them, our response could not or would not have been so successful. As we start the new year, our work is not done. The county has begun, begun its vaccination program in partnership with the state. I want to thank Governor Murphy for his leadership throughout this public health emergency. We have already begun to vaccinate residents in the coming weeks, and in the coming weeks, we plan to have the capacity of vaccinating one-thousand people a day. Dr. Gungill, our County Health Officer, and her staff have done an outstanding job, and together with our partner municipalities, Passaic County will be the leaders in this effort to vaccinate as many residents as possible. We will not stop until we get this, excuse me, virus under control. Please visit Passaic County NJ org slash COVID Vax for more information on the county's vaccination program and continue to follow the guidance from public health authorities. Wear your mask, wash your hands, keep social distance, even after you get the vaccine. Continue the guidance. I want to thank you. God bless the people of Passaic County and of the United States of America. Thank you again.
Okay, I will again turn over the agenda to our Clerk, Lou Impass.
I'll take a motion to open the public portion. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion made by, um, Commissioner Duffy.
Yes.
Second, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Who's second?
Assad.
Commissioner Assad. Okafor?
County Commissioners, Apter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Laporte.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Director.
Uh, just give me a second.
I love how, uh, Mayor Laura thinks he's still part of the Freeholder Board and he's hanging out for the whole time. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. He really wants to be a county commissioner. If, if only we had a dual office holding. Oh, man.
Well, I don't want to burst your bubble, Commissioner, but he's doing the benediction. He has no choice but to wait.
You save some money by getting him twice, right?
So, uh, Director, I'm going to read the nineteenth comments that are listed on the Facebook Live. I'll start with, uh, a, um, from the Assemblyman, Thomas P. Giblin, the thirty-fourth District. I wanted to, uh, send greetings and, uh, wish everyone a Happy New Year and let us know that he is, uh, on Facebook Live right now, watching this, uh, watching this reorganization. Then we also have, uh, Deputy, uh, uh, County Clerk, uh, Luisa Towich. Uh, she says, "Congratulations, Commissioners." Uh, we have a good friend, Joanne Graziano, wanted to let us know that, uh, that, uh, she's watching. We have Mike Strako, which is the son of our Passaic County Chairwoman, Barbara Tanis. She is present. She is with us. Um, she sends, she also sent me a text saying that she wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year and, uh, give greetings to everyone and, uh, thanks everyone for their hard work. I have, uh, Ramon Pagano, who is also the Deputy Clerk, uh, Passaic County Clerk, and he says, "Congratulations, Commissioners James and Commissioner Best." I have, uh, Councilwoman, Lysa Manes, uh, uh, doing "Congratulations, Commissioners James and TJ Best." I have, uh, Arvind Kumar Desai. He says, "Congratulations." I have, uh, Cat Eskeche, uh, is happy Pat is the Director. Uh, Anna Pincham, "Congratulations, Commissioners." We have our Executive Director, Bob Karashi of the NJ CDC, says, "Congratulations, Bruce James and TJ Best. I'm proud of, to call you friends." I have, uh, uh, I believe I had said about Anna Pincham, but she says, "Congratulations, Director Pat and Deputy Director Bruce." We have, uh, Sam Yodice, "Congratulations, Director. All the best to each County Commissioner in 2021." I have, uh, the Hawthorne Pride Alliance, "Congratulations to all from the Hawthorne Pride Alliance." I have Nikima Redman, "Congratulations, Commissioners." I have Larry Grasso, "Congratulations, County Commissioners." I have Crystal Cleese, "Congratulations to all the Commissioners." I have, uh, Nader Abu, uh, Askender, "Congratulations, Ca- County Commissioners." Bear with me, my, uh, just jumped. We have, uh, Mukesh, um, um, Panda, "Congratulations to all." I have Sandy Lawson, "Congratulations, Commissioners." I have Ronald Zarilla, "Congratulations, Commissioners." I have Edwin Garcia, "Congratulations from the Passaic County Deputy Mayor, I mean, Passaic Deputy Mayor. Look forward to our continued partnership." I also have Edwin Garcia, uh, uh, Edwin Gina Murray, "Congratulations, County, to, to all. Best of luck to the Count, uh, the Commissioners, Deputy Director and Director. A great 2021 to follow." We have Stephen Orsini, "Congratulations, Commissioners, and Happy New Year." And I believe that is all with the reference to the Facebook Live Director. Also, I do not have anything at public@passaiccountyNJ.org. Do we have any, uh, other participants besides now? All right.
Mr. Clerk.
And, uh.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
If I may, if I may participate in the public portion?
I, I, I would be a fool not to allow you to participate in the public portion.
You're very kind. Two minutes. I, I know, the, the good thing about the virtual presentation is someone has control of that mute button, and, uh, at, at Tony's request, he simply has to do one of those signs, our Business Administrator, and, uh, they'll cut me off. But I, I do want to share this specifically to the county commissioners, but also to all those watching online. This has been a most difficult year. Some described it as unprecedented in that we have been in uncharted waters, but after a while, I don't know how uncharted those waters were when we were there for so long, we became accustomed to it. As the mayor of the city of Passaic, I wanted to thank each and every one of you personally. You know, the challenge of elected office is to respond to the immediate needs of those that we serve while still keeping in mind the future, the next generation, and I will attempt to keep it brief, but I want to give two examples of your remarkable service during these most difficult times. Many residents throughout our county, our county received food and assistance and services. Few knew that these were being arranged and organized by our county commissioners, our administrator. Our courts ran because Judge Capicella and his colleagues ensured that every single municipality had direction and guidance. Those who were most hungry in our community did not go without food. Those who found themselves without shelter did not go without services. We met consistently at the direction of the county commissioners in Passaic County. We were on the phone with the Administrator, Anthony De Nova. Commissioner Lazara stood here in person and handed out boxes of food to needy families, thousands of individuals that were fed in our city and throughout the county. In the midst of the pandemic and this crisis, we also had a call, each and every one of us, to remind people to fill out the census, something that perhaps would not have immediate benefit, but we became so cognizant of its importance because we received funding as a result of a census that was filled out ten years ago. The county commissioners went on a, a full court press, a one-hundred-percent committed campaign. Commissioner Now, but then Freeholder, um, Bartlett, was everywhere. I started calling him the ubiquitous Freeholder. He was at ShopRite, he was online, he was everywhere telling people, "Fill out your census." Commissioners Pat Laporte and Terry Duffy and Assad Apter and Bruce James were tirelessly ensuring, whether it was meetings to set up testing sites, calling mayors, calling elected officials, saying, "What do you need? What can we do? How can we serve?" In the midst of that, the city of Passaic got to open an amazing park for the county, the first ever Riverfront Park, because of the efforts of the county attorney, Matt Jordan, in his previous role, and the leadership again of our administrator. Our communities came together, a diverse community, with different backgrounds and different concerns, but all in the same boat. And somehow, the county representatives, then Freeholders and now Commissioners, they stretched every resource. They left no stone unturned. At the direction of the Passaic County Chairman of the Democratic Organization, our State Chairman, John Curry, we heard his voice echoed through every single municipality. Serve the needy. Help those who are desperate, desperate situations, understanding that there was food insecurity and in many homes in our county, there was a hunger crisis. I tell you as mayor that I am often called to be a part of ceremonies and to vote because that's our civic duty, but I have never been prouder to vote for a team like Commissioner Best and Commissioner James, whose heart is seen because he wears it on his sleeve every day, and you will hear his, uh, his position as he will apply clearly and, uh, blatantly on every issue that hits home. And let me tell you, those issues always resonate to him when it's about helping the poor and the needy and standing up for justice. There were protests this year. There were calls for social justice. There was so much. And again, I'll reiterate, as mayor, I am so very proud to be a part of this ceremony to have voted for both of you, to stand with the entire board, to support this team. But as a resident, as a father, as somebody who loves this county, I want to tell you from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Because while so many talked the talk, the county of Passaic walked the walk. You held us all accountable. You made sure that we reported our numbers. You made sure that we verified them. Tony, at times, forgive me for the familiarity, it comes because of endearment. Our county administrator, Anthony De Nova, at times went so far above and beyond to make sure that every single mayor or their representative would meet constantly throughout the week, sometimes multiple times, to say, "I need to make sure each of you have the information you need and that I know what I can do to help you guys out on behalf of this Board." We've lost some remarkable leaders, like former Mayor Dunleavy. We've lost family members of leaders like Councilwoman Ruby Kimes-Husson. And throughout all these difficult times, there's so many other leaders that I know everyone would mention. The county of Passaic stood firm, strongly rose to the occasion. I say this because oftentimes residents, not just in my city, but throughout the county and the state, ask, "What does the county do?" My retort now is, "What don't they do?" Thank you so very much for your heart, your service, and for making sure that you live up to that amazing and most sacred oath, a solemn oath that each of you and myself have taken, to serve and to defend this nation and this- a solemn oath that each of you and myself have taken to serve and to defend this nation and this state, this county, and our local municipalities. God bless each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Senator.
All right, um, Director, I believe we need a motion to close the, uh, public portion.
It's a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, County Commissioners, Acker.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. Um, number five, consent agenda. Are there any lead starters?
There are not, Director.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Terry Duffy.
Duffy. County Commissioners, Acker.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lepore.
Yes. I understand that we have some presentations.
Yes. Uh, right now, um, Mica is gonna, uh, has two pre-recorded messages, all from our United States Senators, Senator Menendez and Senator Booker.
Hello, this is Senator Val Menendez, and while I wish we could be. Okay, we're waiting for Mica to queue up Senator Booker's message.
Okay, um, we, um, we'd like to hear from New Jersey Assemblywoman Brittany Pippel Lake. Might take a second, we're giving her, we're connecting her through now.
Uh, Lou, she actually dropped off the meeting.
She did, okay. Uh, I was informed that she was, I apologize, um, I was informed that she was waiting to get on and she might have, uh, uh, not realized that, uh, this was the portion that she was going to be speaking at, um, so. We will move on. Is Assemblyman Patrick Cumberley, is he available?
I am not showing him in the list.
Okay. And then, uh, our Mayor of the City of Patterson, Andre Sayah. You were mentioning he doesn't have video. Can you connect him through?
I'm trying presently to unmute Mayor Sayah, but I don't seem to have that ability.
You know what? Go ahead. What I could do is, um. Louis, we still have a lot of people to swear in. Yeah, yep. And then we have remarks by the Freelders, so we have plenty of things we can do while we're waiting to see if somebody shows up. Yeah, we can, uh, we can try to, uh, we can try to, uh, get, um, we can try to get Mayor, Mayor Sayah through, all right? So I would say, Administrator, I believe we should move on to Agenda Item Act.
I was able to unmute Mayor Sayah.
Okay.
He should be able to speak now.
Good evening, County Commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor.
First, congratulations on the name change. I always felt the term Freeholder was not only antiquated but offensive. I also would like to extend congratulations to County Commissioner TJ Best, County Commissioner Bruce James, and also congratulations is in order for our new Director, Pat Lepore, and our Deputy Director, Bruce James. I want to thank our County Commissioners for helping Patterson persevere through the pandemic. Quite frankly, we couldn't have done it without your leadership and we're not done yet, but your help has gone a long way. And I want to single out our County Administrator, Anthony J. De Nova. Thank you, sir, for your stewardship during this crisis. I believe you should be commended, even though you're a modest man, I have to lavish platitudes for your leader. And want to thank you also for the collaboration, partnership with Patterson, where we received CARES Act money, where we were able to offset costs that we incurred, overtime and redeploying employees, and then also being able to help the school district with $3.8 million of that federal funding so they could purchase PPE, Chromebooks, and also promethian boards. And Commissioner Best, I do look forward to collaborating and revisiting the whole park project where we see that the county will potentially absorb not only Westside Park but Eastside Park. And in a letter that I wrote a few months ago relative to the jail, and I want to make it abundantly clear, not looking for anyone to lose his or her job, but commission, commissioning a study just to review the potential that that property possesses would be prudent. And of course, like Freeholder, I'm sorry, Commissioner Acker and Commissioner Best said, we would want to make sure that no one loses his or her job. So I want to thank all of you on behalf of the City of Patterson. We appreciate the partnership and we look forward to ultimately defeating COVID-19. Congratulations once again, County Commissioners.
Thank you, Mayor.
Lou, do we have anyone else? Otherwise, I'll, I'll ask, um, Judge Capicella to administer the oath of office to those who were sworn, uh, appointed.
Okay, um, everyone just repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bruce James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
To state your, your consent.
State your consent. The Camp House Commission, State Department of Special Service, Representative Officer, Emergency Management Insurance Commission.
That's great, that's great. I love that. Um, County of Passaic.
County of Passaic.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Judge, thank you, Judge. Okay, uh, at this time, we would, uh, open it up to remarks by, uh, any County Commissioners. I guess we could start with the Freilder, Acker. Or wait, let's start with the Lady of the Board.
Anthony, I love. Now, well, I want to start off by, uh, thanking everybody. You know, this has been a challenging year for all of us, but I think it's because of your support and the camaraderie we have between all of us. And I'm talking about everyone who's in here. Um, we got through this year, this past year, and I know we have some challenges coming before us in the next year. Um, and this has happened yesterday, it is such an idiom with the way we do things here in Passaic County. And first and foremost, we put our residents and those in our care ahead of ourselves. And I think that that speaks volumes to the type of people that I know that I work with, and I thank you all for that. I want to congratulate TJ and Bruce. I'm being reelected. I'm so happy that you guys are back and we can work together. Uh, congratulate Pat on being the new Director. Uh, Pat, you know, I'm here for you and whenever I can do to help you. Uh, I think it's going to be great with you as the Director and appreciate Deputy Director. I thank you all for a great year, and I'm looking forward to next year coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Acker.
Well, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Administrator. Uh, first of all, uh, if we could say thanks, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't believe the one person we thanked is our own, uh, uh, Clerk of the Board, Lou Imhoff, for putting together today's, uh, ceremony and all the work he does, uh, never easy and, uh, anytime, uh, there's a little slip or anything, uh, it's on Lou, so it's a very difficult job and we appreciate it, and thank you, Lou, for, for.
Here, here.
And we also have the good sense to be merry to a great woman, our County Clerk, Dana Laura Limhoff, so, kudos to you.
Um, and I hope and pray that next, I hope and pray that next year, um, we'll be together, uh, and doing this together in person, um, that, that we can make the progress.
And, um, I'm hopeful that we will. Um, I just want to say, I know we're, we're short on time, but I do want to say that, um, yesterday was a difficult day for, for all of us, I know that. Um, but, uh, as somebody who was lucky and privileged enough to be a congressional staffer for 13 years, and I know, uh, TJ was also lucky enough to work in Washington, uh, as a congressional staffer. Um, you know, I always dreamed of that opportunity as a young person growing up in this state for some immigrants. I always dreamed that I might get a chance to go work at that magical Capitol dome, um, which was not even, you know, which was hundreds of miles away and seemed very far away and seemed like somebody who didn't have any connections. It might not be possible, and when I did get that chance, um, at first as a, as, you know, as an intern and then later as a staffer, um, I always thought it, it, um, you know, that was my version of achieving the American dream, to be able to get to that point. Um, and, um, you know, my heart is still there in many ways, and I'm, I'm still in awe of that institution even though it has its flaws. But the fact that people, regardless of who they are, thought that they could break in there and treat it like, you know, a third-rate bus terminal, uh, that they could loot and trash, uh, uh, treasure America, um, you know, that hurts. And, um, you know, what also hurts quite honestly is that, and I'm not going to get partisan here, but what hurts is that there are people who call themselves public figures, public servants, um, who have clearly put their career and, um, their own interests and their ego, um, ahead of what is obvious and clear for our country, regardless of party. Uh, and I am so grateful to serve on a Board of County Commissioners, previously the Board of Freelders, with individuals who I think would always put the interest of the public as public servants ahead of their, they would do the hard thing instead of the easy thing if it was the right thing to do. Uh, and I've always been proud to serve on this Board, and I'm proud to be Passaic County Democrat, thank you Chairman Curry. Um, and, um, you know, I've never had to feel ashamed of this body, uh, and I'm grateful to, um, to, to work on it for the next year, so thank you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, County Commissioner Bartlet.
Thank you very much. Um, well, uh, I guess this is the time to let you all know that I've been working on a song. You know how much I enjoy talking about what we do? And I've been working on a song about everything the county government does to the tune of Tom Petty's Free Fallen. And with the change in title, I'm afraid none of you are ever going to get to hear it. But there were verses about all of you, and it's, it's a real pity. But, but in all seriousness, uh, you know, our nation, uh, and our state and our county have been through, uh, an absolutely awful year by any measure, uh, and one that we're still finding our way to the end of. Um, but there's no group of public servants I would rather go through it with than my colleagues on this Board, uh, with the leadership and guidance and insight of Chairman Curry, uh, and the support of our entire team, uh, Anthony from yourself and Matt and Kelly to every last person who makes Passaic County and makes me proud by their service in our name and with that Passaic County, uh, logo, whether you call it a Board of Freelders or Board of Commissioners, right there. Uh, it's a privilege to be part of this group. I look forward to another great year with all of you. Uh, and to everyone watching, thank you so much for your insight, your support, uh, and everything that you do to help keep Passaic County great.
Thank you, Commissioner. And then Commissioner, County Commissioner Terrence Duffy.
Unmute, can you hear me?
Yes.
Maybe that's a problem. I want to thank, uh, first of all, I want to thank everyone out there. Um, our Chairman, who, who has the foresight to put this all together, we have a great team here. Tony, your guidance, your leadership, Matt Jordan, uh, what a, what a great team Matt Jordan is, Dr. Gungrell with the Board of Health, you know, uh, public, uh, public utilities, the whole, the whole staff. Um, it is trying time, it's, um, you know, we've been alluded to throughout the evening about the tragedies. And last night was a, a real tragedy. Uh, we look for a better year, uh, safer year for everyone. I wish everyone a new year. Uh, I can only, um, quote our incoming President is, "With all this turmoil, enough is enough is enough." Let's get back to leadership, let's get back to who this country, back to where it belongs. I can't be any prouder to serve with each and every one of you. You really. You really, uh, you make each and every one of us look good standing beside you. And I, it's, it's pride to be to Sam, or this team. Thank you so much.
Director Lapore, I think the only business left is a motion to adjourn.
Uh, before we do that, uh, the, uh, I would take, I want to take this moment just to, um, thank Micah from IT, uh, for a great job that he's done under very difficult circumstances here. Um, I'd also like to thank, uh, join, uh, Assad and the rest of my colleagues, uh, to thank Louie and the staff for the wonderful work that he does. Um, and, um, looking forward to, um, a lot of hard work, a good year, getting a lot of things done, um, with this whole team that we have in place here. And I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, thank you, uh, Anthony, uh, for everything that you do, um, for this county. Uh, you go above and beyond, uh, the title of administrator. So, um, I'm just, uh, very appreciative that we have you here.
Thank you.
I'll take, uh, oh, I have to give out the committee assignments. Sorry. Now, here we go. Administration and Finance, uh, Bruce James Chair, myself and Sandy. Health and Human Services, uh, Sandra Lazara Chair, uh, John Bartlett, Bruce James. Public Works, TJ Best Chair, Terry Duffy and myself. Law and Public Safety, John Bartlett Chair, Assad Octor and Terry Duffy. Planning and Economic Development, Assad Octor Chair, TJ Best, Bruce James. And Budget Committee is, uh, myself as Chair, Bruce James and Sandy Lazara. Okay, uh, I'll take a motion to close the meeting, and then we'll follow by, uh, the prediction from, um, Mayor Laura.
I'll move it. I'll move it.
Have a second?
Second. Second.
Commissioner, County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlett.
Yes. Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Mayor Laura.
Thank you. Blessed are you, O Lord, King of the universe, Creator of heaven and earth. We thank you for this opportunity to have come together and swear in both Commissioner Bruce James and Commissioner Theodore O'Bastian. We thank you for the opportunity to serve in government. Over the last 24 hours, we all were witness to some of the darkest hours in our nation's history, but we woke up to the bright light of hope with greater expectation that the future provides more opportunities to serve. And today is the testimony that government continues and that officials will move past what occurred to get back to the work of the people. But I ask you for a special anointing over the county officials, commissioners, and all of the staff, over the court, over Judge Capicella, over the administrator, his entire team, over our county and state chairman, John Curry, over the clerk of the board, and all those that served together in this most trying and difficult time. We have all found out what we're truly made of. Lord, we ask that you continue to comfort everyone that lost loved ones. It is a difficult thing for us to continue to serve, even when we're facing our own tragedies and so many officials kept moving forward after losing friends, families, or hearing of the tragic loss of those that they cared about. Heavenly Father, I ask that we will never take our eyes off of the calling that you have given us. It is easy to continue to look back at what occurred yesterday, but I am reminded of what you spoke in Scripture, Matthew, Chapter 5, verse 9. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called the children of God. Blessed are the merciful, for they will receive mercy. Blessed are those that seek justice and those who seek after righteousness. Lord, it is easy to speak about politics, but it's so much more noble to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked, to shelter the homeless, to ensure that in times of pandemic and sickness there's services like vaccines or tests are made available to those who are often most vulnerable and marginalized in our community, while not forgetting that those who have own businesses or at times are doing well are also facing new challenges and uncertainties. Lord, I refer back to the light of hope that we all woke up to this morning with, the belief that today's ceremony would go well, a demonstration to all those who watch online, the government, and that those who are public servants will always be there to honor the oath that we take together. I thank you for this board specifically, a little biasedly, because I feel that Passaic County has the very best representation, not just in the state, but in the entire nation. And I said you would guide us always, give us the wisdom to know how to serve well, the heart to love those around us even when it's difficult and we disagree, and the willingness to do what is right when the time is right, to stand up when we are supposed to. I pray all this in your amazing and most beautiful name. Amen. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor, and to all, wish everyone a Happy New Year. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good night.